I guess, I thought my voice doesn't carry. So, if we could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Geenan.
Present.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Tolaner, absent. Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a call.
Pledge allegiance, a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. We're down to item number five.
Minutes of the April 23rd, 2018 meeting.
Minutes is printed.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item six.
Minutes of the executive session of April 23rd, 2018.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes.
Began.
Moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. I am a little under the weather this evening, so I'm gonna have Judith read the update, Rock Island, please.
First item, Citizen of the Year. Do you know someone that deserves to be recognized for what they do for the community? If so, this is your opportunity to nominate them for the 2018 Citizen of the Year Awards, sponsored by the mayor and city council. There are seven categories for Rock Island citizens: business, professional, education, individual, city employee, organization, and youth. There is a special category for someone that does not live in Rock Island but has contributed to the good of the community. This person or organization is not eligible for the overall Citizen of the Year Award, but may be nominated as the honorary Citizen of the Year. To learn more and nominate someone, go to www.rigov.org/COY. The deadline for receiving nominations is June 8th, 2018. If you have questions, please call committee co-chair persons Alderman Dylan Parker at (309) 738-3416, or Dave Geenan at (309) 738-4569, or City Clerk Judith Gilbert at (309) 732-2010. Community Crime Prevention Partnership Meeting. On Wednesday, May 16th, 2018, the Police Department will continue their monthly informational meetings intended to strengthen existing partnerships with the citizens of Rock Island. This month's topic will cover the canine officers, Dustin Miles and Andrew Lawler and their canines. The meeting will take place at the Police Department Community Room at 1212 Fifth Avenue from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Holiday Observance Schedule. In observance of Memorial Day, City Hall will be closed Monday, May 28th, 2018. The refuse, recycling, and yard waste schedule will be one day late all week. The City of Rock Island wishes everyone a very happy and safe Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and Madam Clerk, we had another thing I believe falls under the update. Since we met last, the Rock Island High School Athletic Department had an event at Jumers, which is in my ward, of course, and it was a highly successful event. It was an ESPY award on sports. The Rock Island Sports Director, Ms. Lilis, she put it on, this is the first time it's been put on, we had over 300 people attended, it was a highly success, and they're planning on doing it again, and this was a very great event.
Good.
So, we need to recognize the high school and the athletic department and Michelle Lilis for what they've done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight.
Presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, awards.
Good evening. I am honored to stand before you today on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to inform the council and the public of the city's achievement in receiving both the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The purpose of the Certificate of Achievement Program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare financial reports, basically our audit, or sometimes I'll refer to it as the CAFA, of the highest quality for the benefit of citizens and other parties with a vital interest in a government's finances. The program has gained widespread recognition as the premier indicator of excellence in government accounting and financial reporting. To earn the certificate, the City of Rock Island had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria, which go well beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. In order to receive the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the city had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines were designed to assess how well the budget document fulfills for major purposes. The first, is it serving as a policy tool? Second, it should present a clear financial plan? Third, a guide for the organization's many operations? And finally, it serves as a communications medium? The receipt of these awards reflects the professionalism and commitment of numerous individuals, as well as many hours of hard work. It also reflects a high degree of dedication and leadership on the part of the city council and administration. Therefore, it is my privilege on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and the Distinguished Budget Award to the council and public. These awards are on display behind glass and finance, and will be incorporated into the city's audit and budget documents. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Job well done, I appreciate that. That's really a great accomplishment. Item number nine.
Proclamation declaring May 2018 as Building Safety Month.
Is there somebody here that's gonna, you receive it for Tom, or? Okay.
Proclamation. Whereas, our city is committed to strong growth and our citizens depend on the safety and economic value of our homes, building, and infrastructure that serve our citizens. And whereas, our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a U.S.-based organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas, our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes, and our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely-adapted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation. These modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, building codes save lives, the theme for Building Safety Month 2018 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2018 encourages appropriate steps that everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies.
Therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, proclaim May 2018 as Building Safety Month in the City of Rock Island, and urge all citizens to join with their communities in participation in the Building Safety Month activities.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say, or speak for them?
Thank you. I know the nine men and women who work on my staff are very proud of the job they do for the City of Rock Island, they're very pleased, but it's also the partnerships we have with the Fire Department, Public Works Department, police, Parks and Rec, that make this really, really exciting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 10.
Proclamation declaring May 2018 as Community Action Month. Proclamation. Whereas, community action connects people to approaches that help them succeed and promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities and rural areas. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability, enhancing and strengthening our communities, which in turn promotes self-sufficiency, ensuring that all Americans are able to live in dignity. And whereas, community action connects millions of children and families to greater opportunity, transforming their lives and making our communities and our nation stronger. And whereas, community action serves 99% of America's counties in rural, suburban, and urban communities, offering life-changing services that create pathways to prosperity by connecting families to job training, affordable housing, essential services, promoting community-wide solutions, and sharing expertise. And whereas, community action will continue to implement innovative programs that create a greater chance for everyone to succeed, will continue to focus on igniting economic growth and ensuring all families can benefit, and will continue to be a voice for the disenfranchised. And whereas, Project Now Incorporated, Community Action Agency, is the designated Community Action Agency of Rock Island, Henry, and Mercer Counties in Illinois, providing affordable housing, Head Start, utility and rental assistance, RIM Rural Public Transit, Good Things Now Quality Used Clothing Stores, senior home-delivered meals, homeless services, housing rehabilitation, senior transit, and basic needs assistance, and has officially turned 50 years old on May 15th, 2018.
Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Community Action Month, in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all community action agencies, and do hereby thank Project Now Community Action Agency for 50 years of fighting poverty and strengthening the City of Rock Island. Happy 50th birthday, Project Now. I believe someone's here.
Thank you.
Speech, speech.
So, we're located just a few blocks from here, and we cover the three-county area, and we employ about 130 people, half of whom are right here out of Rock Island, and a couple are here to join me tonight, Monam Mahia and Lakeisha Randall. And we're just here to strengthen Rock Island and the whole counties that we serve, so keep that in mind as you come across people who need help. And if you know of people that are interested in volunteering, there's two critical needs that we have. One is people that are handy, we have a lot of affordable housing units, and a second is home-delivered meals. We have about a half a dozen routes in the City of Rock Island alone. Every day, people are getting a noon meal, seniors, homebound seniors, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm Mo Hart, and I'm the Executive Director of Project Now.
There you go, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 11.
Proclamation declaring May 18th, 2018, is Dr. Evelyn S. Campbell Day. Proclamation. Whereas, Dr. Evelyn Campbell is the Dean and Vice President of Student Life at Augustana College, a position she has held since 1991, making her the longest-serving member of Augustana's seniors' leadership team. And whereas, Dr. Campbell has overseen athletics, including coaches and assistant coaches for 23 varsity sports. The Office of Student Life and Leadership, including Augustana Student Activities, Sororities, and Fraternities, international and multicultural student life, the Augustana Police Force and Office of Public Safety, including emergency planning, residential life, and student counseling services. And whereas, Dr. Campbell obtained the following degrees: a Bachelor of Arts from the College of Worcester, a Master of Science from Indiana University of Bloomington, and a PhD from Ohio State University. And whereas, Dr. Campbell was a pioneer, bringing a female perspective to higher education at a time when the sector was still male-dominated, and too, to her leadership, was a part of Augustana's success in attracting more diverse students. And whereas, Dr. Campbell has done everything in her power to make Augustana College a better place for students, and a place all Rock Island residents can be proud of. And whereas, Dr. Campbell deserves recognition for her outstanding leadership and service to Augustana College, and nearly three decades of dedication to working with young people here in Rock Island.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim Friday, May 18th, 2018, is Dr. Evelyn S. Campbell Day, in the City of Rock Island. You wouldn't mind coming up?
Could I just say, Mayor and City Council members, I'm very, very humbled by this, but I also recognize that part of this, or a lot of this, I think, is really due to the partnership that Augustana College has with the City of Rock Island, and it is tremendously strong. And I've had the opportunity to work with a number of people within the city, but I want to pay, or make a personal, say a personal thank you, to Chief Van Heisen, to Deputy Chief Foy, and to Chief Yurkey. Thank you. I have worked with them for years on the emergency planning at Augustana College, and they are absolutely outstanding, but so is the City of Rock Island. I want you to know, as I retire, I am staying right here, because I really don't think there's anywhere better than to live in the Quad Cities. These are amazing, amazing cities, amazing place to live, and I just am very, very appreciative for this recognition, thank you.
Thank you, very appreciative of what you've done. Item number 12.
Proclamation declaring May 20th through May 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week. Proclamation. Whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs, such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform.
Now, therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through May 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the City of Rock Island, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to antiquate themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Larry?
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, on behalf of the hundred roughly unsung heroes of public works, that deal with the potholes on a daily basis, that deal with the snow and ice control every single year, to the water sewer and everybody that's not necessarily seen by the public, we do appreciate the recognition. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Just want to comment, and you don't need to come back up, but I think in the three years now that I've been on council where we've recognized National Public Works Week, I've really failed to help you and your department properly celebrate this, and so I'll be getting a list of all the potholes and sidewalks. Week, and I'll send them to you, you guys just hit as many of them as you can, and we'll, we'll get beers Friday night after that to celebrate.
I'm sure it's a small list.
Oh yeah, it's all in the sixth ward, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly.
We'll start there, and we'll go to the other wards next.
There you go. Very good. Item 13.
A special ordinance amending a zoning district and zoning map at 3509th Street and 3511 Ninth Street.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 14.
A special ordinance amending a zoning district and zoning map at 608 and 616 20th Street.
Moves to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 15.
A special ordinance establishing two handicap parking spaces in front of the Rock Island County Jail at 1317 Third Avenue, with one space located on each side of the existing ADA handicap ramp.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 16, a little more reading for you.
Claims. I'll read A and B first. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $15,696.29 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered from March 20th, 2018, through April 30th, 2018. And B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one and final, in the amount of $32,617.80 to Michael's Pipe Service of Brownsville, Wisconsin, for the 2017-18 sewer cleaning and televising program, for services provided from March 5th, 2018, through March 9th, 2018.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments as recommended for claims items A and B.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Randy, for item B, was that the work that was going on over at Augustana that I was inquiring about? Do you know? Or Larry? Is that a different project, or is that the most recent one that they were?
That project at Augustana was supposed to be part of this, but because they were unable to complete that project, that is not part of the billing.
Okay.
This is all, everything else that was done elsewhere in town.
So, this billing excludes the work that was done at Augustana?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, I, I need to recuse myself from voting on B. We don't need to redo it again, but I'll just recuse myself from A and B, it doesn't matter, but.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on A and B, it seems like to me Attorney Morrison, maybe you need to go into the pipe cleaning business, since how they got that much money for two days, and you worked for over a month and got less. Could be. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem, your little humor is good. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried. Item C through J. C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $24,276.09 to Valley Construction Company Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, for an emergency water main repair at 3017th Street. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $29,364.30 to Valley Construction Company Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, for an emergency water main repair on Valley View Drive. E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one and final, in the amount of $177,311.70 to Legacy Construction of East Moline, Illinois, for the 2017-18 stormwater outfall program, for services provided from July 28th, 2017, through April 13th, 2018. F, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number six, in the amount of $29,899 to Greenspace Associates of Davenport, Iowa, for the 2017-18 sod replacement program, for services provided from October 20th, 2017, through April 13th, 2018. G, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number eight, in the amount of $463,852.82 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, for the Outfall VII relocation project, for services provided from March 1st, 2018, through March 31st, 2018. H, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number four, in the amount of $28,720.58 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, for the 33rd Avenue Court Reconstruction West of 17th Street project, for services provided from December 22nd, 2017, through April 30th, 2018. I, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number seven, in the amount of $984,749.40 to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois, for the water filtration facility project, for services provided from April 1st, 2018, through April 26th, 2018. And J, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number five, in the amount of $252,729 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois, for the Outfall VI Basin Separation project, for services provided from January 6th, 2018, through April 27th, 2018.
Accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items C through J.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Talk about Public Works Week, huh?
Yes, exactly. It happens when you have three weeks between.
Yeah. Again, I'll, due to the nature of my employment, I'll be recusing myself from this vote as well.
All right, no other discussion, well, roll call.
Alderman Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 17.
Claims for the weeks of April 13th through April 19th, in the amount of $323,960.72. April 20th through April 26th, in the amount of $495,187.71. And April 27th through May 3rd, in the amount of $135,053.85. And payroll for the weeks of April 9th through April 22nd, in the amount of $1,451,072.51. And for the weeks of April 23rd through May 6th, in the amount of $1,505,723.62.
Motion to allow the claims and payroll?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from General Administration regarding a request for proposals for communications and marketing services, recommending the selection of J. Wild Marketing LLC of Rock Island, Illinois, for a one-year agreement in an amount not to exceed $28,800.
Move to approve the selection of J. Wild Marketing LLC as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's great to see business in the City of Rock Island get this.
Yes. We had several businesses in Rock Island, actually, that bid, and it was a tough choice, but I think we made a very good one.
Randy, or whomever, would be better to speak about this, can somebody just briefly talk about what this agreement is, and sort of what residents can expect from this agency?
Well, it's more, probably more marketing than, or more communications than marketing, but it's both, so really it's to get the positive word out of Rock Island and enhance our community interaction, look for new ways to work with citizens, and get their input, and get the word back to the citizens, and market up. and get the word back to the citizens and mark it up, positive image in the media, Facebook, all of our social media platforms. You know, we do a lot of great things, but we just don't tell our story very well. And this is part of that. And then again, what's very important is getting the feedback also. So Jason has a lot of good ideas that he pitched during his presentation and we hope to put some of those to work. And he'll be, you know, at times embedded with the staff, so he'll come to some of the department manager meetings and he'll pick up on ideas there of things maybe that, that we could promote and, you know, focus on employees, the good work they've done, you know, maybe do some individual stories on employees from different departments. You'll probably see him here at the council meetings and. It's good.
Can we have him introduce himself?
Yeah.
We sure can.
Jason, you go.
Jason, come up.
Introduce yourself and what's your thoughts?
What my thoughts?
We only have five minutes.
Well, okay. All right. I'm Jason Wild, owner of J. Wild Marketing LLC, a full-service marketing agency located here in Rock Island. As far as this position is concerned, I've been trying, or not trying, I've been wanting to work with the city in this capacity for quite some time. And so I recognize the need for it for a while. Randy and Mayor Tomes allowed me to go through this process and I, it's, couldn't be more important, you know, to me. So I look forward to working very, very hard. I'm hoping everything's well and that we're getting the approval. And, I mean, I'm willing to answer any questions that, that you guys have, but I'm, I'm ready to get to work, ready to get started. I, you know, I'm from Rock Island. I live in Rock Island. I have my business in Rock Island and I have a great passion for the city. So with saying all that, this is, this means a lot to me and I'm looking forward to it.
He is business in McKesson Building at this point. People know that. He also is partnered with and worked with Rock Island Economic Growth, Renaissance, and some of their projects, specifically the downtown magazine or brochure that's put out. He's partnered with them on that and has done a wonderful job with that. So once again, another company partnered with other partners of the city in Rock Island along with D. Films and et cetera. I've worked with a number of Rock Island businesses.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Randy, I want to acknowledge that your leadership in making this come to fruition because this is something we've talked about in at least the past two goal settings. And, and this was a pretty quick turnaround to take something from the, the group discussion, the concept level, the goal setting to a, a new change and a new addition to the city's portfolio of resources for all, all good things, growth and, and marketing here.
And I go a step farther. We've been talking about this for five years at least and it is finally happening, so I'm happy to see that. Technically, at this point, he'll, you know, I say report to, but he'll, he'll direct responsibility to Randy and then myself.
Great.
So we need a roll call.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item.
He just, he clapped.
That shows you the enthusiasm. Enthusiasm is definitely there. There's no doubt about that.
Number nineteen.
Thank you.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a contract renewal from Land Treatment Alternatives Incorporated of Moline, Illinois for the land application of wastewater biosolids.
Motion to approve the contract renewal as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty.
Reports from the City Clerk and Public Works Department regarding an ordinance establishing handicap parking spaces on the north side of Third Avenue, south of the current Rock Island County Courthouse at two-ten-Fifteenth Street with one space located on each side of the fire hydrant.
Move to approve the request as recommended and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item twenty-one, please.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding MediaCom's move to state authorization for cable and video service in an ordinance addressing the payment of cable television franchise fees in the city of Rock Island.
Move to accept MediaCom's move to state authorization as recommended and consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
I also. Go ahead, James.
In the report, it says MediaCom will no longer provide a broadcast person for city council meetings starting January twenty-nineteen. This work will need to be absorbed by city staff or a new service provider.
She's gonna do it for free.
I could, or we could have all of our apartment directors do it.
So there will be somebody.
We'll, we'll have to figure something out here, but.
Will we incur any costs is what I think the question is getting to.
Well, that's, that's a possibility here. I mean, obviously if we do it in-house, if it's an exempt person, there's no cost. If there's not, there's going to be.
I hope it would be an exempt person. I guess the other question is, you know, this is, how much is this costing MediaCom? Why, who came to say we want to pull out of this part of partnership? Who came to the table at that?
Well, Me, MediaCom's come forward here and really they just want to get all their, their franchise agreements here, uniform here. And, and this service is outside that, outside that state.
How long has, has this agreement been with providing someone to operate videos for the city of Rock Island?
Oh, it's, it's been in twenty, twenty-five years at least.
Are we the only city they provide this to?
I'm not sure of that.
I would think, my understanding from what they said was that we would be, that no one's going to be getting those services provided for the future because they're making them all the same. That, that was my understanding.
That's, that's correct. Yeah. So they're aligning every, they're following this state contract rather than individual agreements now with each city as they're allowed to do.
And, okay.
So we'll have to, you know, who's gonna man that? I, I couldn't tell you at this point. That'll be part of our upcoming discussions, but we have several months to work through that. So someone will, will man it.
I, I have one more question. In the ordinance, towards the back of the report, it says that the, I assume this is MediaCom MCC Illinois LLC shall pay an annual service provider fee to the city in an amount equal to five percent of the annual gross revenues derived from the provision of cable or video service to households located within the city. Is that the same as the previous contract or ordinance?
It go, it, it is pursuant to the language of the statute, actually, is the state statute sets what was included in the five percent gross. And I believe it is the same, but certainly it is the statutory language that controls what we are allowed to tax. And it includes each one of the available, we made sure that the ordinance included all of the available revenue sources under gross revenue.
Thank you.
If you have MediaCom in your home, doesn't that show up on your monthly bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
No.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Five ayes, one nay. Motion carried.
No, you didn't.
T. Two.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for abandoned residential property and authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with IDHA.
Move to adopt the resolution as recommended, authorize the mayor and city manager to sign the certificate of incumbency and authorize the city manager to sign any future agreement subject to minor attorney modifications.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
On the recommendation, it says CED staff also recommends that the city manager be authorized to sign any future agreement subject to minor attorney modifications. When they say future agreement, they, do they mean with regard to these three properties or the future in years to come?
Mr. Chandler?
That's a good question. And clarification is, this is for only this particular grant itself. If we go forward and apply for more money in future years, of course, it'll come before council for approval and, and whatnot, but it's purely about this particular agreement.
Thank you.
Hold on, Chandler. Are you all done? Alderman, Spaghetti's?
Yes.
Okay. So this is just authorizing us to pursue the grant to fund the demolition of these properties. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. If we do not demolish the properties, do we have to give that money back? What happens?
No. No, actually, I kind of, I look quick on the trigger on this one, if you will.
Okay.
We identified three properties that, yes, we would like to demo with this money.
Right.
All we're asking tonight is just to go forward to receive the money and do the necessary paperwork. If we decide in the course of while we're doing this that, you know what, these other three or four or this one might be better, absolutely we can do that. We haven't set a time or set an exact, these are the ones we must do with this, at this point in time.
Okay. But the money has to be used for demolition?
Correct. That the way we wrote our grant is that we looked at demolition.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If we could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Twenty-three.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from Jose and Alicia Gomez to apply for a special use permit to operate a landscaping business at fourteen-oh-six, fourteen-twelve, and fourteen-sixteenth Sixth Avenue.
Move to allow for the application of the special use permit as recommended?
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious. Item twenty-four.
Report from the, from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Crawford Company to purchase equipment for Crawford Brewery equipment in the amount of forty-thousand dollars.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement subject to minor attorney modifications and authorize the execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussions, I don't know, Chandler, if you went to talk and maybe introduce Crawford and let them.
Absolutely. This is part of the, the fun part of our job where we have a nice success, especially with a homegrown business like Crawford and Company. Jim Maynard's here from Crawford to be happy to answer any questions you have, but we're able to assist them in the purchase of some equipment. Their Crawford Brewery Equipment Group has just exploded and they're buying a building and, Jim, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Okay. Any questions?
Thank you for being in Rock Island.
We are. We're proud to live in Rock Island, so I've lived in Rock Island my entire life and has been conducting business for thirty years in Rock Island, Crawford Company. So at thirteen-oh-six, we've been there for forty years plus, we're out of, we're out of room, so we decided to build, purchase a building over seven-thirty and thirty-four Savage, the old Pomp's Tire, I believe. So what we're gonna do is we put a new roof on it and we're gonna completely renovate it, put a new Eiffel structure on two sides, on Thirty-First Avenue side and then the Eighth Street side and then paint the rest of the building. And so it, it'll be a definite improvement to the city of Rock Island. So it's been a nice store for many years, in my opinion, so I hated to go buy that building. It's been sitting there empty for, I don't know how long, so.
Yeah, too long.
Is your brewery equipment made out of steel?
Stainless steel.
Stainless steel. Are you guys seen any effects? I've read some article about breweries and brew masters with the tariffs coming up on steel.
We haven't seen it. We've seen it all steel. All of our fabrication business has gone up considerably, yeah. Stainless steel is, is, lags behind a little bit, but the plain steel's gone up as galvanized steel, so for sure.
I don't know if anybody's seen his business or not or been through it. I have toured it actually several times and they're busting at the seams, but, you know, they're even renting space. I saw the other downtown here by the fire station.
Right, right.
To store some things. And so they're utilizing a lot of space, other places besides just where you, we know where they're located.
Right. So we, we employ about two-hundred-and-forty people in Rock Island, so it's, you know, not all in Rock Island, of course, but throughout the country, the Quad Cities.
And we're waiting for you to open your new brewery in Rock Island like you did in Bettendorf.
Maybe sometime.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions? Discussion? Thank you for your part in the partnership.
Thank you.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Twenty-five.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding terms of a development agreement with Quad City Botanical Center to assist with atrium renovations and repairs in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Move to approve the terms as recommended, direct staff to work with legal counsel to draft a development agreement subject to minor attorney modifications, and authorize the execution of the development agreement by the city manager.
Second. Moved to second. Once again, Chandler, if you want to talk about the project real quick?
Yeah, this is another fun part of our job. We have another great cultural attraction here in the city of Rock Island with the Quad City Botanical Center. And the city, last year, in the budgeting session, decided to make sure there are funds available. And with this project, we were able to assist them in the renovation of their atrium. And Amy Jenkins, the executive director, is here to answer any questions you may have, and also, come on up.
Sure. As she comes up, I'll be abstaining from this vote due to the Doris and Victor Day's involvement and tied up into this long-term grant.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to the mayor and the council. I cannot think of a city that I would rather call home for the botanical center than Rock Island. The city has been amazing for us, great partners for the twenty years that we've been in existence. This is our twenty-year anniversary. Just want everybody to know, we're here to serve the public and add to the cultural vitality of Rock Island and the Quad Cities, and we teach about ten thousand schoolkids every year about plants, so I thank you for helping us do that.
Thank you for your commitment to the organization, and of course, the city of Rock Island. You hold a lot of different events down there. Your creativity is, is great, all the different chocolate deals and the mangoes, et cetera, so, but thank you for bringing that amenity to, to Rock Island.
Absolutely.
I have a brief question.
Sure.
You mentioned schoolchildren that come through your doors. By the way, there's nothing but good things that I have to say about the botanical center. I wanted to start off with that.
Thank you.
How many people do you think come, attend the botanical center events and come to visit on an annual basis?
We see forty-three thousand usually, annually, somewhere in there, between forty-three and forty-five. That includes nighttime events, so anyone that has a private rental, those numbers are also included in that count.
And has that number been going up?
It has gone up steadily, year after year. I did want to add, with those ten thousand kids that we see, we also go out to the schools now. So, we did not used to do much outreach, and now we're actually able to go out into the schools and deliver our programming at the schools for those schools that can't afford to come because of transportation or financial barriers. So, we're also seeing a lot of schools outside of the center.
You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for maintaining the building. So many people kick that can down the road too many times, and we need to spend the time and efforts at maintaining, too.
Thank you. The, the infrastructure is something that's really important to us, because twenty years in, we want to be here another twenty, forty, sixty years from now, doing the same work and serving, so we have to take care of the building in order to do that.
Yes. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays, motion carried, one abstention.
Item twenty-six.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for installation of a handicap parking space at twenty twenty-four Thirty-third Street.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Moved to second, need discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this. Item twenty-seven.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for installation of a handicap parking space at twenty-five Forty Twentieth Avenue.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second, need discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this. Excuse me, twenty-eight.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments to the Preservation Commission.
Approve the reappointments as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, let you know who they are. Reappointment of Elizabeth DeLonge, and reappointment of Paul Fessler. So, it's been moved to second, need discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Number twenty-nine, report from the mayor regarding reappointments and appointments to the Planning Commission.
Move to appoint, move to approve the reappointments and appointments as recommended.
Second. Moved to second, let you know who they are. We have a good number of them here. We got reappointment of Michael Krieger, reappointment of Bruce Harding, reappointment of Ted Johnson, reappointment of Jason Lopez, and reappointment of Norm Moline. And then new appointments are Bob Kelly, Chris Beardsley, Jared Moore, Sarah Presley, Kimberly Callaway Thompson, and Ashley Slevkin, I can't pronounce that, but we're close enough. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this. Thank you. Item thirty.
Report from the city clerk regarding an application and resolution for the Quad Cities Marathon to be held on Sunday, September twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Move to approve the event as recommended and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved to second, need discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item thirty-one.
Report from the city clerk regarding a Plaza Event application from the District Incorporated to partner with Ribco Incorporated to hold the two thousand eighteen Memorial Day Plaza Picnic on Saturday, May twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, from seven PM to midnight, and a request for the consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in area.
Move to approve the event and request as recommended, subject to complying with all Plaza and liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Moved to second, need discussion? Well, they do a great job down there. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thirty-two.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from the District Incorporated to partner with Wake Brewing for the sixth annual Rivers Edge Homebrew Fest of Ale event on Saturday, July fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, from two PM to six PM, to be held in the green space adjacent to the Wake Brewing Facility at twenty-five Twenty-Nine Fifth Avenue, and a request for the consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in area.
Move to approve the event as requested. Sorry. Move to approve the event and request as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received. Second.
Moved to second, need discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item thirty-three.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Wake Brewing to hold an outdoor event, Rocktoberfest, on Saturday, September twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, from four PM to eleven PM, in the green space adjacent to the Wake Brewing Facility at twenty-five Twenty-Nine Fifth Avenue, a request for sound amplification, a request for outdoor alcohol sales, and a request for the consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in area.
Move to approve the event and requests as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Moved to second, need discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thirty-four.
Street closing and sound amplification requests. A, report from the city clerk regarding requests from Levett Johnson for a street closing at Thirteenth Avenue between Ninth Street and Tenth Street, and sound amplification for a community awareness event to be held on Saturday, June twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, from two PM to ten PM. And B, report from the city clerk regarding requests from Friendship Manor for a street closing at Twenty-first Avenue between Eleventh Street and Twelfth Street, and sound amplification for a block party and ribbon-cutting ceremony to be held on Thursday, June seventh, two thousand eighteen, from ten thirty AM to one thirty PM.
Move to approve the street closing and sound amplification requests as recommended for items A and B.
Second.
Moved to second. Need discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Boy, is there a lot of festivities and things going on. How about that? That's great. All right. We have other business. We have somebody that has signed up, Michael Williams. Like, if you could please get up there, speak, tell us your name, your address, and what you want to talk about.
My name's Michael Williams. I live at seventeen oh eight Fifty-third Street, apartment six, Moline, Illinois. I'm a Southerner, and I'm a flea marketer. I do flea markets and auctions, and also deal in scrap metal all the time. I have contracts with people where I pick up junk, stuff like that, take it to the scrap yards, and so forth and such. Occasionally, you'll have a flea market that's over here in Davenport, maybe three or four times during the summer, that's run by Michael Salter, that's advertised and everything else, and whenever they have it over there, it's just for one day. The same thing happens with the Kiwanis Club at the place out here in East Moline, at Rock Island County Fairgrounds. They have it... I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Anyway. And they charge thirty to forty dollars a space out there. But those are really not flea markets. Those are places where people can go out there and make money, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It's just for that one day, and there's only like three times during the summer that they do that. Same kind of case over there. You have a place down here on the Levett Street where you've been trying to get Walmart to come in, and stores, and this, that, and the other, and so forth and such. I don't know if you've ever been to a flea market, but if you ever go down, down south to Tennessee, North Carolina, or even places like Phoenix, there's these flea markets that are open Friday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday, that have thousands of tables lined up out there, where they charge ten dollars a space for people to come out there and sell their stuff, okay? Whether or not you have an apartment, a house, or you're a regular vendor out there, where you have spaces that you come out there every weekend, or every month, and sell on a regular basis, they have thousands of these tables, and it makes tons of money. The flea market industry across the country, one of them is in South Carolina, has twenty-five thousand tables that they rent almost every weekend on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday basis at ten dollars a pop. When you go talking about that kind of money, it's foolish to let this place down here on the Levett Street just sit there without considering turning that into a flea market, to where the city would make a lot of money that they've lost on that project over time. And what I'm proposing is that, that the city of Rock Island looks at this very realistically. And I would be willing to run it with my partner here, George Baras. Would be willing to run it and to make sure that it's run properly, and we would be accountable for whatever we do out there. Period. But I just don't want to see it just sit there and go to waste when there's people like me and other people out there that could put it to good use, you know? And the revenue would be there, plain and simple, because these places make tens of millions of dollars every year on flea markets. One in Phoenix does probably two hundred million dollars a year. I mean, it's a huge one out there. So, I think the city needs to look at that realistically. That's my son, I'm sorry. I told you, stop doing that. He doesn't listen, I'm sorry. But that's the reason I was up here tonight, is to talk about this. I, I do these flea markets all the time. I can't make money on one weekend out here where it costs me forty bucks, or one day out here in the middle of Iowa, up in Davenport, where it costs me forty to fifty dollars. You know, that's just not a flea market. That's a one-day market. That's what they call that, is a one-day market. So, that's what I'm asking the city to do, is to look at this and us do something with it, you know?
Mr. Williams, I'd like to respond to you just briefly. I think that's a great idea. Not everybody's gonna like that idea, but I like it. I think an empty space like that should be used to our benefit, whether it's a flea market, farmer's market, go-kart track, or any other idea that people can come up with, come up with, and there are a lot of ideas out there. So, we're having a goal-setting session coming up soon, and maybe that could be discussed at that time in terms of what might be possible. And if we could get your contact information...
Okay.
After the council meeting, that'd be helpful.
Well, see, I, I sat down and I looked at this about three or four months ago, and if you put two thousand tables out there, and you put an indoor facility for people to use it during the middle of the wintertime, you know, and put several hundred tables in there, or even a couple of thousand tables or rental spaces inside that, and you put out enough information out there to people in Burlington, Dubuque, and other places where they have all these other flea markets and stuff like that, you're gonna draw their attention. They're gonna come up here, instead, instead of them going all over the place to these one-day markets, they're gonna want to come up here where they can set up for an entire weekend and make a lot more money than they would be making if they had a one-day market somewhere. So, you look, look at five thousand tables, let's say you put five thousand tables out there, five thousand tables at ten dollars a pop for just one day, one day, five thousand tables, ten dollars a pop. That's fifty thousand dollars.
I think we get your concept, and I think until that land is developed into something more permanent in terms of our plans for retail, that I would like to see something like your idea take place.
Two hundred thousand dollars in a weekend is serious money. I mean, that's serious money for the city. In no time, they could make back the fifteen million or so that they've lost on this project. It would be made back so fast to make your head spin. I mean, seriously. Because that's, that's what, that's the kind of money that they make at these flea markets in Phoenix and other places like that, where they got big flea markets that are open every weekend, four days out of the weekend, they're open, and they're making business. The vendors, you have food vendors here with food carts and stuff like that, so forth and such. They come in, they sell their food there, and so forth and such. You're not gonna be making tax revenue on that, but you can be making tax revenue on the rental spaces and the rental spaces that you'll be renting to people all year long, plain and simple.
Thanks so much, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who do I need to get my information to?
Is there a pen or pencil up there? You can just write it, you can write it right on that, there's a piece of paper there.
I have this right here?
There you go. Please.
Yeah, we'll make sure that our Community and Economic Development Director gets that information and follows up with you.
Okay.
Explores this idea. It's probably the most viable thing we've heard. I mean, quite honestly. I'm not even kidding.
I'm serious. These places make tons of money.
Sir, yeah, your point's well, well made. Well made.
Very good. If you put your phone number there, and someone will reach out. Is there any other business?
Yes, mayor, I've got a couple of things here. Larry, could you come up here? Cook, for just...
Do I just leave this here?
Yeah, leave right there. We'll take care of that. Thank you very much.
Y'all have a good evening.
You, too.
So, I, I know earlier tonight, we had approved a part of a contract for Michael's Pipe Services, and there was obviously an issue that occurred at Augustana College with them. It's my understanding that they are, they've basically been prohibited from working there again because of their conduct, performance on the job site. And, and the other thing, you know, I couldn't remember for sure, but I thought I had, because we've worked with them before as the city, correct?
Correct.
And, and a concern that I had brought up before was that they, unlike a lot of the contractors we work with repeatedly, they, they have a pretty substantial footprint on OSHA's Establishment Search Site for safety violations and other, and coincidentally, it's not just safety violations, but it's also complaints about their workplace conduct. And so, I wanted to bring this up because I know that we have a responsible bidder ordinance, and, and I would like to make sure that we do something to send a very clear signal that, whether it's a period of time, three or four years, whatever it may be, but, you know, I take a step back and I just think, do we want to work with a contractor that had such a poor performance with our, one of our biggest partners in the city? You know, and it's, again, I, I've come back to this theme, theme several times, that working with taxpayer dollars is a privilege, not an obligation. We, we work with open competition, we don't have loyalty to any one company, but we do over time develop relationships with those who are consistently meeting the project on time, on budget. Without OSHA, we like to get the good public comments, and I know we do, on some of our projects. I don't think we've had issues of late with anything we've contracted out, with things causing a nuisance or whatever in the community. And that is super important, so, you know, I'm just asking you to take a good look at this situation, and give us a recommendation on what you think our approach should be if Michael's tries to bid on a project again in the future, knowing that we have this responsible bidder ordinance, and that one of our friends and partners has been very much wronged to such an extent as to be banned from ever coming, working on that campus again. I think it's a very serious situation that we don't encounter very often. So, if you could work with that and give us a recommendation on what you think.
Absolutely. And I agree, you know, what happened at Augustana was completely unfortunate. You know, was not happy with the way the whole incident went down with Michael's. We had not had any issues prior to that particular incident, and I'm not making excuses or making amends for them, but the way they handled just that one situation was critical. And it was critically wrong. So, I will, I'll be happy to look at that.
Because I know it's, they offer a fairly specialized service, and so I don't think we have a long list of contractors in the region who would be bidding. I, I think back in the past that we've maybe had one or two on any of these given projects where that particular skill is needed.
There are, there are others out there.
There are others out there, and I don't want them to feel that, that we don't take offense to that as well, you know, because it, you know, so, but again, the recommendation could be a number of things, but is there a path to, to, to rem, to make a remedy here? Because, you know, we are not Augustana College. That was their experience, but we were involved in that project, and I'm preaching to the choir here, but I, yeah, I just, I was bothered by that and, and their, and their record with OSHA as well.
Sure. Bottom line, we hired the contractor, therefore it falls on our shoulders.
Sure.
You know, and that's why, that's the approach we took with Augustana. You know, it's on us. It's not just Michael's, so.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we will. Absolutely.
I don't, yeah, okay, I agree with you. It's, the buck stops with us, but the, the contractor, we expect them to make positive -the, the contractor, uh, we expect them to make positive choices.
Correct.
Uh, and, and it's always this idea of, uh, for any contractor, yeah, we could have a, a twenty years of positive service with them, but, you know, something can happen to change that, you know, so, but I appreciate you looking into that and giving us something to think about with that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then, what, enough for, enough for Larry, but one other thing I've got, um, and Randy, you had sent this out to us, um, and I kinda wanted to address this just because, you know, Channel Eight is a big presence here in the Quad Cities. Um, we had gotten an email last week about them picking up an article about twenty cities, uh, in Illinois that should be declaring bankruptcy. And I, I wanted to touch on this because, you know, our, our citizens see this, and, and I'm, I'm looking at the page right now, and this, this was picked up by, uh, on, on May ninth, posted at three thirteen on WQAD's website, picked up by their, uh, digital team. So I, I'm inferring from that that this is a, um, the digital team could just be, it could be people, or it could just be pulling in articles that are put out by groups, um, that may or may not be journalistic endeavors. Um, and the thing, I've talked about this before, but this Illinois news network, you know, you trace it back another step, and they're funded by the Franklin Center for Government and Public Integrity. I, well, if you do a little bit of research about these two organizations, it's very clear that they're very conservative-leaning organizations, uh, and that this news, if you would call it that, very much has a political agenda. You know, the, the, the backdrop of, you know, WQAD or, or WHBF, you know, obviously those are very well-established news organizations that are for-profit, you know, companies that are engaged in the dissemination of information for the public. Uh, and, and, and much of what WQAD puts on their website is stuff that their journalists and their reporters have gone out, used their, their skills to report on, and then share it back with their audience. Well, well, this is something that gets picked up by a third party, but then it's on a platform that people are accustomed to seeing as, oh, well, this is the news, these people have vetted this. But it's, it's, it's a reprint of a third party's information, and, and so, you know, I, I took enormous offense, this is reminding me of a couple of years back when we got this publication that came out with all the firefighters and the pensions that they were getting. And it was this like big hit list that went out to all these mailboxes in Rock Island, and I brought it in, I'm looking at you, Alderman Mayberry, because I think you remember that.
Oh, yeah, I remember it.
And I, I thought, what is the, what is the mechanism here except for to divide people, uh, and, and make us have this sort of animosity towards our public employees, whom we've hired willingly and freely, set up our, uh, uh, agreements of employment willingly and freely, that are paid for by the taxpayers, uh, and, and they get an incredible service. And Stephanie, I don't know if you wanna comment on this, just not this article, but this idea of, or I guess my question to you is, is the city of Rock Island in a position where we need to declare bankruptcy to meet our pension obligations?
And I couldn't quite hear the last question you asked, so if you could repeat it.
Yes, the question is, are we in a position where we need to declare bankruptcy because of our pension obligations?
Absolutely not.
And do you foresee that happening anytime in the near future?
I do not. I, um, echo your statement when you said you took enormous offense to the reprint of that third-party political propaganda. I felt the same.
Thank you. Because, you know, it is offensive, and I, and I say this, uh, you know, there's, there's a place for public discourse about policy, uh, and it's a shame that it's happening in this sort of covert way. Uh, you know, if WQAD wanted to do sort of an investigative piece and, and speak to our city administrator and speak to our finance director about the, the work that we've been doing with our actuaries for all these years, the seriousness that we take it, they could have talked to the police chief or the fire chief to understand how important these pensions are to the people who put up their entire career in public service, uh, and then what that means to them and their families, and what that means for our economy. You know, this is a joke. It, it is an offensive joke, and there's a sick motive to this, and, and I, I for one am not gonna stay silent on this. Anytime I see this in any of our local media, I'm gonna call it out, and I think, I think WQAD should pull it down from their website, because it's not news. Um, or they should label this as an opinion section and make sure that people understand this is a political opinion. Uh, talk to your own city finance director if you wanna know the facts about what's going on.
Well, and beyond that even, David, uh, our, our city attorney, state law cities can't declare bankruptcy, correct? So it's completely inaccurate, too, that we should declare, we can't.
Right, that, that is the, the situation in the state of Illinois, and, and not anybody has tested that as far as I'm aware.
But, but the end game is that you, let's, let's take this, let's take the hook on this and say, well, then, let's declare bankruptcy and absolve ourselves of, of these obligations. Then who's gonna invest in us? Who's gonna trust our word at any point in the future, you know? And there's, there's, there's a, there's a timeframe here, we're, we're looking at into the twenty years out, twenty forty roughly, where this, uh, very real obligation becomes something that is significantly more manageable, uh, as we are having a retirement, uh, a push of retirements across the country, that's what's happening right now, there's a big, that's why pension systems in every state are experiencing this, they're not all poorly managed, there's just a lot of people retiring. Uh, states are taking approaches to set up two-tier systems for new hires for the future, uh, but, you know, the, we, we set these things up, we made these commitments, the money is there, uh, but to try to backdoor these conversations into our community, uh, then you got people looking at police or public works or fire with this look of like, why are you destroying my community? When that is so far from the truth, it's, it's, it's offensive. So, uh, I just wanted to address that for the people at home, because I could see someone seeing this and think, my goodness, the city I care about might be declaring bankruptcy. Uh, it's far from it, very far from the truth.
Thank you very much.
Well, and I had a resident, a constituent, share it with me as well. I mean, people do read this stuff, and you know who else read it? People that are thinking about putting a business in Rock Island. We do not need political propaganda attacking us, frankly. Um, it's, it's inappropriate, it's, you know, it's fake, all right? That's the buzzword. Uh, and it's not beneficial to our community. I wanna take this opportunity to share an event that I'm working to bring here to Rock Island, ProPublica Illinois, a nonprofit, nonpartisan news, statewide news service, uh, in partnership with Free Street Theater, um, sort of a theater group in, in Chicago. They're coming to Rock Island on June sixth, uh, it's gonna be at Hallberg, I believe, but it's gonna be an open conversation about the media and how the media represents specifically Rock Island, um, and how our community is represented in the media affects the real lives that we live here in Rock Island. I mean, I know that this council and councils before this one have continuously said that we keep on getting a black eye in, in our community, the Quad Cities, and, and wider, but here's another example of a media agency continuing to darken that eye, and it's inappropriate, and so I look forward to having a frank conversation, uh, on June sixth, welcoming this statewide news agency, like, na- nationally, okay, well, this is the Illinois section, but yes. Uh, they're coming only like five places in the entire state of Illinois, and they've decided to come here to Rock Island to have this conversation, and so, um, it's important, and I hope that we have some good, uh, frank dialogue there, and we really dig into, uh, why these agencies are spreading these rumors or the sentiment among our constituencies, what is the ultimate goal, and what on earth can we do to, uh, ignore it or to, you know, stave it off? So, I hope everybody comes out for that event.
What we can do is hire a person like Jason to work with it.
Jason.
So, excuse me.
I got something.
Thank you. You got something you sent?
Yes, I do, quickly. Um, and I have to agree with my colleagues one hundred percent. Usually I try to stay out of the public fights and try to tell them to stay out of those public fights, but right now, they're a hundred percent right, and, and needed to be said, and you guys said it well. May nineteenth, we have a neighborhood cleanup that will be held by CCC, and the address is Twelve Street, Twelfth Avenue, at the Church of Peace, and it will be held from one P.M. to four P.M. But we'll have a ward cleanup, first ward cleanup, and we'll meet at the King Center, and that will be at nine A.M., Saturday, May nineteenth. So, I know the chief usually joins us, so I hope he has some free time this Saturday to come in, work with us. Did you hear that, chief? So, hopefully everyone can come join us and help us make Rock Island beautiful, keep Rock Island beautiful.
There you go, thank you. Real quick, just let people know that, uh, Alderman Tolaner, uh, lost his father-in-law here recently, actually, the visitation was tonight, and so that's the reason he's not here, and, and keep that, him in our prayers. Uh, on a positive note, uh, you know, last several weeks, we've actually sworn in six new officers, police officers, and so, uh, I met all six of them, fine young gentlemen, and, uh, I think they'll be good additions to the police department, and so, uh, we look forward to, to getting the force back up to, to full speed, so, uh, job well done. Anything else?
Mayor, I've got one more thing here. Uh, thinking of the future and the summer here, um, and Alderman Clark, please forgive me. Please. Um, and I'm, I'm taking your suggestion on this. Uh, can, chief, can, can, can you come up here for just one minute, please? Thank you. Um, I just, I want us to be able to be a little more proactive this year, um, and nuanced about this very specific situation in regards to the Fourth of July and to fireworks. Um, this is one of these things where we have rules on the book, we have ordinances here, uh, there's state laws at play, um, and last year was sort of a standout year from my perspective, at least in my ward, uh, just in terms of the total volume and the duration of, of, um, residential fireworks. And I know for some of us, it's more of a concern in our ward than it is in other wards, and I think that we had arrived at a sort of a, uh, an understanding that the police can only do what they can do, and, and we work this situation based off of complaints, people gotta call it in. Um, it, would it be possible for those of us who have areas of our wards to kind of work a little more proactively with you that day, that evening, to try to get some more patrols out, or could we send out a mailer? Could we work with, with the city manager on that to try to send information to blocks or areas where we know we got calls from and send a letter out to these neighbors and just remind them of what the laws are?
Just one of the-
One of the things we're gonna do this year, uh, that we didn't do last year, is we're gonna start a public information campaign-
Great.
-uh, starting on June fourth, one month ahead of the, uh, holiday.
Okay.
And letting people know that fireworks, exploding fireworks are in fact illegal, and you're, uh, subject to fines. I mean, there, there's a lot of misconceptions that are out there, some people you talk to actually believe that, uh, the state regulations are waived on the Fourth of July, that you can shoot off fireworks all day. Um, but it is complaint-driven, uh, we only have a finite amount of resources that we can have in place to respond to these calls. Um, it is difficult to enforce because, uh, you, you know, you have to actually witness the violation occurring, uh, an officer has to actually witness it or have a complaint that's going to come forward and act as a complaint, and we don't get that a lot of times. Uh, but we'll do our best to try and manage it as we have in years past, and again, I think some with a, uh, public awareness campaign ahead of time may help.
Sure. Good, thank you.
That's a good project for Jason.
Yeah. He's gonna back out of this.
Second lowest bidder, yep.
Yes. Kind of spontaneous comment, we have a lot of proclamations tonight about different causes and organizations, and, uh, this month being dedicated to them. It occurred to me that this council and the mayor and the city manager has been working together as a team for approximately one year, this, I think this month is our one-year anniversary, and I just, in thinking about that, think about how well we've, and worked together and how hard we work to try to address some of the issues, um, of the city, and we don't always agree, but we manage to, uh, move forward, and I just, uh, wanna thank everybody and congratulate everybody. Um, and I'm looking forward to our next year gaining momentum. Uh, we planted a lot of seeds, and I think we're gonna see the fruits of those, along with the staff and all the city employees. Thank you. Well said. All right, we're ready to move on?
One more.
You start putting you guys out of time limits.
Congrats to the Broadway Historic District Association for their wonderful Mother's Day Tour of Homes this past weekend. Heard that, uh, we sold two hundred and fifty tickets, right? So that's two hundred and fifty people. Uh, my home is right on Twenty-second Street, where like the home base of the event was, at Carpele's, and, uh, walking up and down my street on Saturday, or no, Sunday, whenever it was, um, Mother's Day, whatever day that was, uh, walking up and down-
Yesterday.
It all blurs together. Anyway, walking up and down the street, and there was license plates from different states, different counties, I mean, um, I saw faraway Iowa counties, right? Like Des Moines and stuff like that, it was pretty cool.
That's great.
So, two hundred and fifty people coming into the heart of Rock Island, so hats off to that group. Um, I was not involved in organizing it at all, I said I'm too busy, so, kudos to them for, good job, well done, and thank you to our city staff as well for helping out, they provided barricades and, and assisted as, as requested, so, good job, everybody.
Very good. All right, item thirty-six.
Executive Session. Five I.L.C.S. one twenty, Section Two, C twelve, the establishment of reserves or settlement of claims as provided in the Local Governmental and Governmental Employees Tort Immunity Act. If otherwise, the disposition of a claim or potential claim might be prejudiced, or the review or discussion of claims, loss, or risk management information, records, data, advice, or communications from or with respect to any insurer of the public body or any intergovernmental risk management association or self-insurance pool of which the public body is a member. Five I.L.C.S. one twenty, Section Two, C eleven, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Five I.L.C.S. one twenty, Section Two, C six, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body. And five I.L.C.S. one twenty, Section Two, C twenty-one, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section two point zero six.
Move to go into executive session for the exceptions cited.
Move to second. Any discussion? Here, now how about a roll call? If I can get it out.
Alderman Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spagettis.
Yes.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.